First that he's grandson of Jeff Jordan, County Commissioner. And also that this is his last requirement to becoming an Eagle Scout attending this meeting? Well, congratulations, that's a great achievement. So, let's all stand for the pledge.
A allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Donald.
Looking over, and I hate to bring this up because I, we talked about putting it to bed here a few weeks ago, but seeing some of these booster club supplements just has really taken me back a little bit. The amount for band corps, a lot of those areas, I just caught me by surprise. And I know that I have a granddaughter that participates in band and I know it takes a lot of money to operate a band, but I didn't know a lot of that money was to supplement some of the people to the extent that it is.
Mr. Gill, you have any comment to that?
Actually, we had that very discussion yesterday, Ms. Barnes, who else was in on? Mr. Sandvig and I. And how do I say this diplomatically? I actually, I was pretty doggone upset when I saw what we were paying some of these folks because three or four things occurred. One, kids and their parents are raising this money. Now, I know we've got some of the better bands and some of the better athletic teams in the country, but is that really our goal to the point where we're paying this kind of money? I know other schools in county couldn't afford to do it. And I don't think it's fair that somebody's getting a $16,000 supplement and somebody's getting an $8150 supplement, which is more than any head football coach gets, any head basketball and other head coaches. And I think at some point, I really feel pretty good about the fact that we're getting coaches' supplements, in particular in connection with what boosters can pay those, we're putting restrictions on what boosters can pay volunteer coaches that will take effect immediately. I think we've got to, we gotta get this under control. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair to pay this kind of money that's being generated or raised by kids and their parents to somebody to provide that kind of service. Now, they might argue, well, you know, we're making them better trumpeteers or we're making them better flag persons and you guys shouldn't tell us how we can spend our money, we raised it. But I don't agree with that. So, what I respectfully request is that we put it on policy and look at coming up with some kind of, what we're guidelines with respect to what we, maximum payments.
Okay. Aaron.
On that topic, the people that are listed here getting these supplemental, how many of these are Rutherford County employees versus not? Do we know that? Do we have a distinction?
I know many of them aren't. I don't, tonight would have reflected tonight, many of them aren't Rutherford County employees. Like, I know the one that got 16,000 is, works with percussion section, one of them's a band director's wife, two or three of them are affiliated with swim clubs. And I guess they can name their price, so to speak, but we don't have to pay it. We don't, I don't think we have to go to where we've gotten.
Other discussion. Terry.
I guess, just thinking out loud. And I just might be thinking ahead of the game, but how are you gonna come up with a figure?
I don't know. I guess it's real we discuss the policy. But I mean, like, for example, I don't know how we got to where somebody's making $16,000 supplement. Apparently, they're coming in during the day and working with members of the band.
I don't, I don't know anything about when it comes to band or anything like that. You know, it's a boatload of money as far as I'm concerned. Also, I've been involved on the end of it, where you get out here as a booster club, raise these funds to try to make better facilities and, you know, better coaches and all that. Then you've got other schools over here that don't have boost, they've got booster clubs, but they won't get out here and work for it. So, I guess where I would, I don't know how we'd put a dollar amount on the whole situation, but I think these, these booster clubs are the ones raising the money and, you know, they've got their boards and all that set up, so I don't know how, how much we want to get in there and mingle with it, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and I understand that point, but I don't count that with, you know, we give, what's every high school get? A band director, a assistant, and they've got a choral person? I mean, like, at some point, the boards before us, the superintendent before us thought, well, this is an appropriate allocation to run a band program, a band director, assistant band director. For example, E double double A regulates how many coaches you get for basketball, football, all that. So, say Siegel, which is one of the schools coming into question here, I mean, they're able to generate apparently a couple hundred thousand dollars, which allows them to do things that maybe some of the other schools can't do. If it were a female male deal, it'd be a Title IX issue. But from that perspective, I think it's an issue anyway. But yet, I mean, Mr. Hodge, you raised a good point, it's, you know, how do you tell them how much they can spend out of their account? But I think we've got that authority if we want to go there.
Wayne.
I certainly think it's an issue that we need to discuss and bring up in policy and maybe see what some of the other counties are working with. So, quite a bit of money to be handing out, you know, with a school-sponsored, and again, I say school-sponsored activity.
I think what we reflected, Siegel right here is paying $41,000 in supplements on this agenda alone.
Tim. Just looking at it, you know, the $16,000, it's gonna be more than what the high school band director supplement is going to be.
Yeah.
I know that supplement, if I'm not mistaken, is it 16?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
16 of a B S and five, if it's still that, so, you know. So, that's, that's really overwhelming to see that.
So, what would be the, I know it's based on percentage, but the highest supplement the system would pay?
Football, head football gets 22, don't they? 22 based on a B S and five.
Which would be how much?
What's B S and five, 40,000?
40 would be a round number.
So, say 40, it would be?
It'd be, it'd be $11,000 round numbers, wouldn't it?
Aaron did?
The supplement is intended to compensate these teachers, Rutherford County employees, who are staying additional hours, working weekends in specialized activities. If we find that these individuals right here are mirroring every hour that the Rutherford County employee is spending, and then in addition to that, spending even more hours, you know, with the students in a, in a really specialized application, will we, will we be inclined to say, yeah, we looked into it and we find it justified? You know, what we've done here is, that's good, is we are putting it in public and putting it, you know, to the scrutiny of the general public. You know, for us to make a judgment that we're gonna limit band programs because all of a sudden we found out, oh, they're expensive, I think might be a rush to judgment. You know, certainly, it's worth noting, there they are, right there on the consent agenda and, you know, maybe we'll get some public feedback on it. But I think our band programs are rather successful and maybe this is why.
The point is, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The point is the inequality. I mean, you know, where you have an influency issue sometimes. And I think Mr. Gill said it just a while ago, you have schools that don't have the ability to raise this kind of funds because their free and reduced population is so large.
Yeah, and we didn't put it on the consent agenda just for, to make it public knowledge, although that was part of it, it's also to get our consent. So, I think it's legitimate that we take a look at it without prejudging the issue.
Well.
Tim.
I guess at one point in time, I might have been on that other end of the situation from a social economic situation. But I'd hate for us to make the decision based upon the fact that one school needs to be penalized for being able to do something and whatever. I don't know that we want to lower their standard there. I mean, it's gotta be something to be considered. But I wouldn't want our reason to be that we don't want to allow a school that has some ability to do that, or parents that, I say school, parents are willing to get out there and work at it that way to say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna draw you back to, to the middle of the ground. I'm not sure that's...
You know, it's interesting also, we were talking at the hall, you know, they're four, four from Smyrna High School and, you know, I know the work that goes into building a band, but each of those guys were supplemented for going to camp. I don't know how long a camp is, I presume a week. But I remember in my coaching days, we'd go to three, three camps a summer and that was just assumed to be part of your coaching responsibilities and your supplement. Now, Mr. Tack, it goes to, I don't know if that was the case there. And I don't particularly object to doing that, looks like a reasonable amount of money. But I don't think the coaches are given a supplement for going to camp, are they? Paul?
Only if they are paid to go to camp.
But a lot of people go to camps in the summers that don't, aren't compensated for. Now, I'm not saying they shouldn't be, but I do think it's worth exploring with respect to whether we're allowed and if there's a limit on what we pay or do we just not even dabble in that mess like, you know, maybe the holidays thing.
Well, I sort of like the idea of sending it to policy. We've got some parents on there, we've got teachers on there, some additional staff folks. Shall we just put it on that agenda and kick it around a little bit? Or do you not want to touch it? Now would be the time to...
I'd suggest we discuss it.
Donald.
Every, every activity that's extracurricular activity that we do in school, we hope is important for that child that participates in it. And we want every one of them to feel good about that program that they're in, whatever it is. So, you know, when we're, we're looking at this, it was just, it was just the amount that just, and I understand that booster clubs work hard. I know a lot of booster parents and they do work hard. But we don't want the cost of participating in an activity to be, and that child being able to participate based upon how much money a parent can raise for that organization. We would like to see a student be able to participate on the merit of that activity and not, and when I see such things as this type of supplement, like I said, it just caught me by surprise. And I know that it takes money to operate and some programs are expensive to operate and band is one of those. But are we spending it the right way?
Well, once I hear objection, we'll put that on the agenda of the next policy committee meeting for discussion. Anyone object to that? Okay. In the meantime, we still have a motion in a second to approve this consent agenda. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. We have no visitors this evening? There were, let me mention this, Joyce sent an email. I guess I should have mentioned it before we voted, shouldn't I, Joyce? There were a couple of items added to the consent agenda, which I don't think were in any way controversial, but apologize for not reminding you or noting that before we voted. A bus contract termination and, is the other one the contract? Yeah, which I doubt that would be in controversial nature to us. No visitors? Number seven.
Seven facilities, building automation system retro commissioning proposal. It's kinda veered a little bit from protocol. I'm gonna ask Mr. Clardy just to give a quick explanation to the viewers and also the audience about what we're proposing here and what we are proposing is to spend $19,875 for evaluation, reprogramming and tracking of the Delta system controls at eight different Rutherford County schools. Kinda give a summary, Mr. Clardy, with respect to what we'll be doing.
We had a energy assessment done on eight schools over the last few months and there was a lot of recommendations made. And one of the recommendations was that we go in and look at and reprogram our telemetry on all of the units. Now, this is all digital, we get digital input, it comes in a computer system and software package and we're able to adjust that and control temperatures and different moisture content, different things in our building. We found out that there's some extra steps that we can take to reprogram some of that software and save some money on energy. So, in a nutshell, that's what this is, it is going in and reprogramming all of those things. We have a system that we put on our schools the last seven or eight years, it's called a Delta system, which does monitor that with gauges and also with the software. So, that's what we're proposing to do, is go in, take a look at those, find out what's efficient, find out how we can adjust those controls to get more efficiency out of a unit and save money.
Tim, what kind of a range do you have in saying it's gonna cost this and we can make this money back up in, how many months or years do you feel like it's appropriate to, to put that expenditure out and recoup that and then be saving money?
Well, anytime you can get your money back in five to seven years, you're doing good. And we have, in all of these reports, we have a, how long basically it's going to take us to get that money back and it ranges from two years to six years.
Other questions for Mr. Clardy?
So, we're recommending that you approve the building automation system retro commissioning proposed for facilities services incorporated, the amount of $19,875 as presented. Funding will come from the maintenance budget.
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number eight.
Stewart's Creek High School budget, the requested construction budget for Stewart's Creek High School that we have been working with is $46,344,102. We need to forward the budget by line item to the commission for approval. Recommend that you approve the $46,344,102 construction budget for Stewart's Creek High School as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
When will this be presented?
Sir?
Tonight?
I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm gonna present it tonight, I would...
I guess we get on the next health ed, don't we, Jeff? Yeah.
But this is largely a formality, right?
It is, yeah, absolutely.
I didn't want anybody to be alarmed. Possibility we might put the shirt back. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
The Eegaville School Phase Two addition budget, the requested construction budget for Eegaville Phase Two addition that we've been working on is $3,704,825. This totally includes the architect fees for Phase One design. We need to forward the budget by line item to the commission for approval. Recommend that you approve $3,704,825 construction budget for Eegaville Phase Two addition as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Just a quick clarification, County Commission votes tomorrow night on the Eegaville project, assuming that it'll pass and I feel pretty confident it will. We start construction when, Mr. Clardy? January?
Over Christmas break, but we're beginning some preliminary items such as making relocations become affordable and that, that will be every time for a person, Mr. Clardy.
Right, and we'll be open for business August of 2012, right?
Yes, that's correct.
What we get, how many classrooms, you remember?
There's eight with two, or there's eight with one science left.
Okay, and there's other things as well? Can't remember all of it.
There's a restroom, teacher work rooms, there's the unfinished basement with restrooms in it of the entire building.
Yeah.
Well, we need to have a little celebration over this again because it was by no means certain that this would happen this year. So, thanks to all involved for that.
See, this amendment funds $1,544,976 of the cost of Eegaville Phase Two addition by reallocating available funds in the building program fund. A larger source of this money is $1,191,872 currently budgeted as design fees for the next elementary school. The funds were kept in an elementary project because the funds have already been shared with the Murphy's or City Schools. This $1,191,872 in elementary funds were lent internally to provide the cash for the design fee for Stewart's Creek High School until the county went to the bond market. $88 is from Rockville Middle School budget, $169,049 is from Oakland Middle School budget and $183,967 is from the Whitworth, Pecanning Construction budget. This amendment moves a total of $1,544,976 to help fund the Eegaville School Phase Two addition. The county would be able to borrow $236,588 less than it would otherwise have borrowed by using this already shared money. Eagle construction projects are funded with seven thirteenths of shared elementary funds and with six thirteenths unshared funds. Recommend that you amend $1,191,872 in design fees, funds for the next elementary school and the $353,104 remaining middle school construction funds for a total of $1,544,976 for the Eagle School Phase Two addition as presented.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? We had a fair amount of discussion over this last night. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Takes us to the self-evaluation. Anyone have anything to say about self-evaluation? Aaron.
Glad we got it done. We're on track to apply to be a TSBA Board of Distinction once again.
Other comments?
I'd point out two things. One, this young man's grandfather, Jeff Jordan, who is health ed, has gone through some procedure and understand doing well, glad to know that. And I also got word today that a gentleman that we honored last board meeting, Mr. Jack Jolly, has, has taken ill and just want to pass along our best wishes to Jack.
Tim, other discussion? You want to discuss your handout?
Yeah, I do, just quickly, Ms. Barnes, we sent this, we're sending this out to all the high school principals. Matter of fact, I think it's been sent out. One of them called me today and said, I was, he was particularly happy to have the guidance tip up. Kinda give a quick summary of what we're doing here, Ms. Barnes.
So, Mr. Gill asked us to look at the supplements that the county currently pays to coaches and persons who oversee certain extracurricular activities at the schools. And you'll see that in the first column where it says Rutherford County supplement paid on a B S and five. And that's something that's always been in place. Well, what he asked us to look at was a figure that would be consistent and equitable, would be in line with Title IX and try to keep our, our system, again, consistent when we pay out supplements to all of these persons who come in and provide services as a volunteer, if you will, paid volunteer to our students. So, we calculated basically the same index as an assistant would receive in each of these listed sports and activities. And if the sport in itself did not have an assistant, we basically cut the head coach supplement in half and we favored it up a point if we needed to and came up with these figures, again, looking for some kind of consistency and equitable status among all of these volunteers system-wide. The next column is the number of allowable volunteers that are paid or non-paid and this is by T double S double A standards. And that's been in place for quite a while under our procedures and guidelines for volunteer coaches. So, those are the three columns that you see. And then following that, we just, I cut and pasted just a section from our guidelines for volunteers that reminded principals of this number. And we came to that conclusion after a principal's meeting that Mr. Gill called with a, a number of middle school and high school principals. So, you'll see the same packet for high schools, for middle schools and then for K eight because we still have one existing K eight that follows this procedure and has supplements allowable to them.
Have we got this in procedures? Is that what our intention was?
We have the volunteer coach procedures in place as to how they are recommended by the board.
I said, maybe we ought to be, maybe that ought to be part of policy since we're pursuing it, but it's something to discuss. But you used two words, consistent and equitable, which is what we didn't have. I mean, I think they're all over the place with respect to what they're paying folks, which is kinda what I'd like to see us do with booster clubs too.
So, just, I know after all the discussion we've had, I'm still a little vague. This middle column refers to the amount we can pay who? Volunteer coaches?
Coming from a booster or school athletic group supplement.
Not we, but the boosters.
That's what we want, that's what they can pay. Kind of work for it, that's correct.
And they, and they can still pay supplements to our employees who are getting system supplements, right?
But that has to come through our, our books.
Is there a limit on that amount?
Yeah, that would be whatever the prescribed amount here is.
Well, I mean, we're already gonna pay them that amount.
Yeah, we've got, like, for example, football, we've got a head coach, how many assistants? Four?
Five assistants, four at high school.
Four at high school. All right, if they want a fifth, sixth and seventh, they can do them, they can pay them at a booster, but they're gonna pay them at no higher rate than what was reflected here.
Well, what I'm saying is can the boosters now give supplements to the, you know, people on our staff who are already getting supplements? Can they give an additional amount to the head football coach, an additional amount to the...
They do that.
Has it been limited to field maintenance?
Correct.
Or if they don't have? I am not aware of any, there should be none where we are paying person A a board supplement and booster club is paying another.
For, for the same particular specific...
So, it'd be a payment for a separate activity or something.
Yeah, like field maintenance, like say field maintenance, I don't know if we got into camps.
Camps and stuff.
White room supervision will be done in the summertime.
Sir.
White room supervision would be certainly...
White room, yeah.
Correct.
Terry.
That's what you're saying, let's go back, back to this session, band director, for example, you have any number you want, correct?
On band directors, because there is not, they're not allowable for T double S double A, we have not in our guidelines put a number there to limit the number of volunteers that could assist them, simply because what we done before, it just dealt with sports.
T double S double A mandate, I mean, they give direction with respect to how many volunteer assistants you have, but they don't, they don't govern bands.
That's what I'm saying, they can have as many as they want to.
Unless we, unless we put restrictions in place.
But my next question is, the maximum you can pay them is 10%.
That's the suggested on this form that Mr. Gill had... That's the suggested on this form that Mr. Gill had, correct?
Yes.
Well, you take this consent agenda stuff, but these figures there, how's that ten percent work?
First of all, this takes, this takes effect January the first, right?
Yes, sir, that's what we proposed.
So this isn't, this isn't what we're doing now?
No.
Okay.
No.
This is something Mr. Gill had us put together in lieu of all of this information that's come to you.
But the first column's correct, is what we're doing right now.
Yeah, that's been in place for a long time.
But would the fellow who's receiving sixteen thousand dollars, would he even fall into that? He's not really, it's not listed as an assistant band director.
Which is...
I think that's what Terry's asking.
Yeah, I know.
Would, if this were in place, would he have been limited?
I don't think so. That's true, and I think we gotta, we gotta revisit that, like, neither would a choreographer or somebody, a gymnast that comes in and works with a cheerleading squad. I mean, I think there's a lot to discuss.
There is, I mean, and, you know, we talked about putting this to bed, but the reason we had all that discussion about how to handle this is so that stuff like this would come up. Something came up a little quicker than we thought, maybe, but here it is, so... Other question, were you done explaining, Harry?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on this document?
Yeah, if we could also tie to this, the population of students that we're, um, you know, affecting, you know, I know that that has some, something to do with how the supplements are figured. Uh, number of students, number of activities, you know, and, and such as that, um, you know, if we could also have that as we prepare for that policy meeting and, and looking at it, you know, how many students are we, are we, uh, are we working with?
I'm not sure I understand.
What's the potential impact? You know, a, a football coach, you know, he gets this additional money because he's got so many additional hours.
A hundred, oh, I got you.
You know, he's got, he's got, uh, twenty-seven events, uh, and each one is populated by fifty or so young men, uh, you know, on the football team, okay? So his, his impact is fifty students for twenty-seven people. Why does a baseball coach get less? He's got twenty-seven events, oh, but he's only got fourteen guys on his team, you know, or something like that. You know, his typical interaction is only fourteen. The basketball coach, he only has ten on his bench, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things that, uh, you know, justifies that many people putting together a band program is that there are that many students a part of a band program.
Of course, that's gonna vary school to school, considering...
It will.
Okay, other comments on this, or anything else?
As far as the end of the meeting?
Yeah, no, we're on general discussion, sorry, any topic?
And everybody, that I sent out a notice from, uh, NSBA that, uh, apparently the pathway of reauthorizing, uh, ESEA is, is working through, through Congress, so we may see, uh, no child left behind, at least fixed in some form or fashion in the, in the future. I'd like to say near, but since we're dealing with Congress, I'll just say in the future.
And then on a related note, I don't know if you've checked your email, but I did forward an email that Mr. Gill forwarded me, and a couple of other systems have, have adopted resolutions about a bill that apparently will be considered next session in the legislature about school vouchers. I don't know how likely it is that that's gonna pass, wanted to get a sense of that.
Well, it, it just, it's one of those things like, uh, elected superintendents, you know, those things, they just won't go away. And, and, and they're detrimental to the, uh, public school system, but, you know, that's why, that's why we're here to, uh, you know, fight for our students and, so, they'll still be with us, so, there'll always be those issues.
I had conversations this week with Speaker Harwell, as well as Senator Ketrin, and it is not too early to make our voices known to those people.
Right.
Uh, they are very aware of the school voucher legislation, and they need both our formal and informal input. And so, we, we definitely need to weigh in. The school voucher, uh, legislation, as it's been proposed in, uh, years past, uh, has oftentimes exempted Rutherford County, uh, and it's been intended for, uh, larger systems. And what we need to be very careful about is that, once it begins, you know, it, it opens a threshold, you know, crosses the threshold, opens a door that we can't go back on, and we just, we just need to make our voice known.
Why don't we just put this on the agen- next agenda, Joyce, and maybe here, if you could arrange to have a presentation on the issue, and so we have a little background, and we'll pick it up then. I think we have a general idea of what this is all about, but I'd like a little more information before we jump in, but thank you for that, Aaron, so... We'll take that up next meeting. Tim?
Uh, it seemed like the last meeting we, we mentioned about charter schools. Have we heard any more about the, the charter school proposal that might be coming our way?
I haven't heard anything else.
What was the deadline on that, is it November first or something like that? It shouldn't be too much longer before we know, right? I mean, uh, I think that's another thing a lot of states are looking at is, I think, including Tennessee, is reforming the process of how those are approved, effectively removing local control from that, which is another thing we're supposed to worry about. Other discussion? If not, we stand adjourned.